Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to City Council Agenda Review Meeting. Ms. Farnsworth, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
And Councilmember Klitsky is on screen. Did you call her name?
I...
Yep.
Oh, all right. Thank you. We're going to make a little adjustment in our agenda today due to whenever our members have to step out. We're going to go to our amendments for rule suspension, and we're going to start with Councilmembers of Combs' request to defer a resolution.
Oops, no.
You want to start with that one first?
No, the one before that. The, on the February 10th one, sorry.
Okay.
So, I move to suspend the rules to invoke, amend, and add updated version of the Keep Washington, or Resolution 2025-0010, the Keep Washington Working Act of 2019.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I'm not going to support this. This is not on our agenda for this evening. Folks who should be here to have the opportunity to testify will, by virtue of this not being on our agenda, be barred from participation, and therefore it should not take place today. We should maintain this on the date the majority scheduled to vote for, which is the 24th.
Any other council commentary? All those in favor of, first of all, the rule suspension, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. The suspension passed now. We'll go ahead and vote.
Yeah, I'll just first move to amend the, or the, the version, with the updated version that was most circulated by Jackson at 2:20-ish.
Do you just want to highlight those couple of...
Yeah, there are three changes. The first change is that is creating a task force of city council staff, administrative staff, and community partners. The second one is that is encouraging folks to know their rights, particularly their right to ask for a warrant. And the third change is that encourages employers to educate their employees about rights.
And Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I'm going to oppose this amendment, in part because City Legal has not yet had a chance to review these, and I do have concerns that there are aspects of these amendments that do not comport with federal law, particularly the warrants, which was just pointed out. There is federal law that basically says that warrants are not necessarily, not necessary in certain circumstances. Also, we are within the 100-mile range of the border zone, which does change the rules there, and so to suggest that warrants in all cases are required is not accurate.
Councilmember Navarrete?
I'm actually going to have to say the opposite. They are required when they are serving someone that has a detainer on, like a deportation. They, by law, it is required to have a warrant with the person's name that they are looking for. They can't, and it's illegal, to go in a home or stop someone without a warrant.
Well, I would, I would like to have City Legal come and address this so that we have an accurate depiction of what the law says.
I can speak that City Legal did respond to me as a sponsor of this. They didn't, and we did not circulate it.
They responded to all seven of us.
But it was just this, that we amended the language to include feedback that is council not advising and giving legal advice. So that is the, the change, is that it's not providing legal advice. But it is rather encouraging folks to know their, their rights, but without telling them which it is. And I don't think Legal is going to get up here and tell us what, what those rights are.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, and I think, too, the, the changes that I saw in the resolution really reflect, I think, a lot of what is being broadly communicated and has been vetted around know your rights. So it's very, very consistent with that.
Under some of the information I received, under the SMC Code 12.05.050, it really kind of lays out what we, as a city, and our city employees can do or cannot do. It is not giving advice to other employers or the rest of the city, but encouraging to seek out their own information going forward. So I don't think we're advising them. Mr. Wright will give us a high-level briefing tonight before we take the votes on the resolution. So Councilmember Cathcart, that will be coming. Yes?
Yeah. Another area that I do still have questions on from City Legal is regarding captive audience laws and whether or not the encouraging of businesses to educate their employers, what does that mean? And is that a violation of captive audience laws?
All right. Council President, do we, do we need a second on Councilmember Zepone's motion to amend?
We did. Councilmember Dillon seconded that, I believe. If he didn't, he did now.
For both the suspension of the rules and two...
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, the rules have been suspended. There's a motion on the floor to adopt the amendment. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes?
No.
No.
That amendment is adopted. All right.
Then Council President, I move to, move the agenda item to the February 10th agenda.
It's the motion is seconded to move to February 10th. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, once again, I don't understand why you want to limit participation by such a broad number of folks in our community. This seems to be just because an activist said to the paper that we'd be voting on February 10th, and the majority filed this for the 24th. So I guess I'm not entirely sure what we're doing this for. We could hold this till the 24th and have an opportunity to hear from everybody who wants to participate, who had maybe planned to participate, and not just those that have a heads-up that this is going to be changed.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, I can speak to that and definitely, you know, understand the, the concerns. I think this certainly is not the end of this issue, as we, you know, have heard a lot, I think, over the last two weeks about the urgency of a lot of actions that have been taken and the need for more information to get out there regarding people's rights and what they, what they need to do. So I think that merited, merited the moving forward.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, the problem is, though, is that if there were people who wanted to come and speak in opposition to this, right, now is the time for them to speak, because there's an unlimited amount of people who can speak to this issue, whereas in the future, if it was like, oh, if we would have known, we would have shown up for that. In the future, it's limited to 20 at an open forum if they got, get on after the action's already been taken. And so it's not just like, oh, we can keep hearing, like, this is the time that we're supposed to be hearing from the public on this issue. And it does rob individuals who are passionate about this, who want to speak to an issue like this. It robs them of the ability to be able to voice their opinion, which I don't think is a good thing.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, and further, obviously, there's a suspension of the rules, but the entire intent behind changing our rules was to allow for time for amendments to sit. That's obviously not happening. It was to encourage more public participation. This is doing the opposite. This really is antithesis of our rules and being done for reasons I really don't understand. I know there's been some incidents, although many of them have not, there's not been any sort of evidence to demonstrate them. And so I would rather this stay on the date. In fact, there's a lot of reasons why folks, even amongst the community that this addresses, would not want this to be voted upon or even considered. And frankly, I, I think that those are some things that we're going to have to discuss tonight, unfortunately, if this goes forward. But this is something that should sit for everybody who knows when it's scheduled for, which is exactly what our rules are intended to do, is to create more process. We heard about process earlier. You can't violate process. Here we are violating process. It's always a double standard. So this is not the way to do this. Just follow normal process, vote on the 24th. At the end of the day, this is a non-binding resolution that has zero effect in law, which means there's no urgency behind it.
Councilmember Zepone, and then Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, really quickly, my rationale is that we have heard from a lot of folks in the community, we've seen a decrease in businesses at our businesses from what's happening in our community right now, and there is an urgency to make sure that our businesses are patroned, that people are coming to the businesses, that folks know their rights. And in two weeks, that could still have a, a negative impact on our community, and I think there is an urgency, and that's why our rules also allow things to happen quickly, too.
Councilmember Bingle, and Councilmember Navarrete?
Yeah, I'll say, I mean, this, this effort was clearly to get folks who supported this to know about it, to where they could come in and speak to it, right? I mean, before I, as a sitting council member, had even seen this resolution, we had people testifying in support of it. Then again, in violation of our rules, by speaking to an agenda item at a committee that was not an agenda item. And so it has been very clear to me and to others that this was never about process. It was always about getting the people that we wanted to speak on it to speak on it, and favorably. We didn't want opposition to it, because council members weren't even aware of what was happening when the testimony came in. So I don't believe this is because we've already heard from many in the community. I think we've heard from the ones we wanted to hear from.
Councilmember Navarrete?
Yeah, I think it's not accurate to say that people are not going to be able to speak. We have been receiving several emails in opposition to this resolution, phone calls, and we've also been hearing in public people not, you know, in, again, in person in opposition of this. So silencing people is not accurate. Everybody has been voicing their opinion on this. Second, the community knows that a resolution is just a, like a support document. They are well aware that it's not changing the laws or implementing the laws or removing anything. It's just a support. And the community asked for this, the community did, they came up with this resolution to, for city to bring it up, and that's what we're doing. It's been brought up by the community members. I do recall, and, you know, granted, I wasn't a city council member before, there have been resolutions brought up by both Councilmember Bingle and Councilmember Cathcart that have not been brought up by community members. They've been brought up by you, and I, I don't understand why the difference on those resolutions within this one that has been brought to community. So are we cherry-picking the resolutions that you want to vote on or that you are supporting? Regardless, I know, you know, you are not going to be supporting this, but let's be accurate across the board, and there's no difference between the resolutions that, you know, you both bring in and the resolutions that community members bring to the table.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, and I'm not saying you can't bring the resolution. That's not what we're saying at all. But when you say we're not silencing folks, yes, if we hear from 10 people, but 200 would have shown up, you know, it's not to say, well, yeah, we did hear from some, yes, but we would have heard from many more, or could have heard from many more if we had gone through the regular process. It was on the, the agenda for the 24th, and so if somebody was following the agendas, they would have been looking at two weeks out from now. And again, when you say the community asked for this resolution, some members of the community asked for this resolution. That's not to discount it, but let's not pretend as if the whole community wants us to make this statement, because that, I don't believe is accurate.
I call the question.
Question has been called.
Um...
You want to call the question?
I mean, I'd like to hear from Councilmember Cathcart, and then, you know, we're kind of going in circles here, so, you know.
Does, does that require a second? Okay. Yeah, the only thing I would say is, I, I'm not sure why, and in fact, I mean, if this is something we want to put in our rules, okay, but if we need community groups to come down here and testify in open forum before we can consider an ordinance or a resolution, I mean, that's a pretty drastic change of tradition. And the idea that somehow, when they come down and they've spoken and actually wrote this behind the scenes, and I don't really know who wrote what and how it's gotten where it is, which is a mystery to me, because I've seen all kinds of different versions, and people say they wrote it, and the council wrote it, and I, I just don't know. So I, I think there's so much confusion there. But the other part of this is, we hear from our community members constantly, and just because they can't come down here, or maybe tonight, they are not allowed to, because it's, we're going to vote two weeks in advance, but if they can't come down here, that, that doesn't mean that their concerns are less valid. This process is not what democracy looks like.
I just got to 30 seconds. I just want to say, for all of us, we have all had advocacy groups come down here and advocate when the other opposing party has not had the same amount of input. So this has happened on both sides. I agree with Councilmember Cathcart, this is a resolution. It will not change the laws. Two more weeks, people will still be testifying and talking about the injustices that are happening in our community. So advocacy is advocacy, whether it is orchestrated or organic. So we're done. The question has been called.
Not yet.
No, I'll second it.
I move to call the question.
And then there's the motion?
Second.
I'll speak to the motion. There's no speaking to that motion.
Not me. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now, the motion on the actual table, the, the resolution motion. That was just to call the question.
That was called. The motion, is there a motion on the table, on the actual, to move it to tonight? That was the motion, yes. That was moved in second?
Yes.
It's been moved in second to move it to the resolution to the ninth, to the 10th, which is this evening. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any noes?
No.
The ayes haven't. Thank you. Okay, let's keep going. There was consideration for a motion to suspend the rules also, from Councilmember Klitsky's
Yeah, so this is about the, I believe, I don't have anything in front of me, I'm sorry, guys, the Department of Ecology Grant, is that the one we're talking about?
Yes. Would you like Mr. Wright to brief it for you, Councilmember Klitsky?
Yes, I think we were briefly told about it at one of our committee meetings, but this'll, this'll be a review.
Okay. Mr. Wright, you want to take us through this?
Yes. So both of these items relate to a Department of Ecology Grant. There are actually two motions here. The first is to amend item number 11 on the consent agenda to allow substitution of a new contract, with, I don't recall the changes in it, but, and the second request to suspend the rules is to deal with Resolution 2025-007, to amend that resolution that would relate to the Carbon Quest contract. And that's a special market conditions resolution as opposed to a sole service. So I recommend that there be a motion to suspend the rules to allow amendment of OPR And then, following disposition of that motion, you can entertain a motion to suspend the rules to add the Carbon Quest contract to Resolution 2025-007.
Is there any desire to separate these two, or can we do them together?
My preference is always separate, but, you know.
All right. Mr. Wright has said separate. Well, can I get a motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of the amendments to OPR 2025-003 and Resolution 2025-0007?
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second? Moved in second?
Second.
All those in favor, suspend...
Question.
Yes.
So there's six of us here now. How many votes does it take to suspend the rules? Just...
Takes five.
Takes five.
But Councilmember Klitsky is attending virtually.
Right, but Councilmember Zepone is not here.
Oh, correct. Okay.
Yeah.
I understand.
So it's been moved in seconded?
It's been moved in second to suspend the rules. All those in favor of suspension of the rules, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
So then, aye.
Aye.
Any noes? All right, let's entertain the motion then, to suspend the rules for the amendment of OPR 0073. Is there a motion to...
I'll make the motion to add 2025-0073, the revised version, to today's agenda.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Bingle, because I just lost my train of thought. It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any noes? Absentient, that pass. On to the Carbon Quest Contract 0007. Can I get a motion on that one?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second.
What are we, what are we, what's the motion?
This is the Carbon Quest Contract.
I know, but are we suspending the rules again and then adding it to...
I think you already suspended it for this one.
For both of them at the same time. So it's moved in second to accept the amendments to this. Any other council commentary? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Noes? All right. Mr. Scott, we'll turn it over to you.
All right.
Council President, do you want to just go ahead and deal with the last item, to defer Resolution 2025-005?
Yes. Need another rule suspension?
Uh, no.
Just to defer, yeah.
Just to defer this to March 3rd, and this is for the adaptive projects from Safe Streets?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to defer Resolution 2025-005 to March 3rd.
Second.
It's been moved in second.
And the purpose of this one is specifically just because there was a project or two on there that we wanted to see if there was a different funding source.
Correct.
Yeah, and some smaller projects that, there was some indecision with the neighborhood councils, and so we might have a little bit of excess of funds in looking at how we allocate
It's been moved in second for the deferral. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Absentient, that is deferred. All right, Mr. Scott.
Okay, I believe that I heard that we did not need briefing on the climate resilience grant. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, then, I think that just leaves the request for briefing on the mid-biennial review process. Is that right?
Let's look it up and go, let's do Ms. Shaw's.
Oh, of course, yes. You usually do that before you hand it to me. Sorry.
I know, we kind of got out of, out of order here. So today, we are taking testimony on the appointment of Lindsay Shaw to the Park Board. I saw Lindsay in the room, I thought. Come on down. Thank you for stepping up and putting your name in, Ms. Shaw. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the Park Board.
Well, Lindsay Shaw, in the Logan neighborhood, and born and raised in Spokane, moved away and came back to really appreciate especially our parks in our beautiful city. And then having children, I took them to the park all the time as a single, as a stay-at-home mom, and then I noticed that there were issues with a lot of our parks, just having to make sure to clean them before I could let my kids play, and also noticing sometimes that other people in different neighborhoods might have a different experience taking their kids to the park. I know that it's, it's just part of our society these days, but I really think that having someone with lived experience in maybe a part of town that doesn't see the improvements to their parks like others could benefit our Parks Department, our board.
Questions for Ms. Shaw? Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, thank you so much for applying. It's nice to see you. Where do you kind of see, like, the intersection of public safety and parks? I mean, I guess ways to, you know, make improvements, and where those two kind of have a nexus?
I think it's really important to activate our parks with people, people activated parks, and that's why the Logan neighborhood has moved our block party into Mission Park and just have, finding ways to be inclusive to all people. And so we have people that might live in the park, eating with people who are very privileged to, to go to school in our neighborhood. I think that finding more opportunities that are, there's no cost barrier to having families come out and be in the park is important, but I think it's also important to realize that if our parks are not monitored some, that it would, a barrier for families feeling safe in the parks. So I think it's a fine balance between the two, and I think that encouraging more people to go and be in their park, to clean up their park, or if they have a passion project, like a garden, or pollinator gardens, or something like that, to bring those ideas to their neighborhood council or to whomever, just to try to think of ways to make your park better.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, thank you, Lindsay, for applying for this. Really, my only really question is just, you know, what's your, your ability or your commitment to attending the meetings, and, and how much time can you spend doing the Park Board work? I know they have subcommittees and things like that as well.
They do. I see this as a pivot from my neighborhood advocacy to a broader advocacy across our whole city. I was appointed to the C tab, but, you know, that's dissolved, and our neighborhoods are seeing less and less participation, and I just see my time being better spent with this Parks Board and the groups that they have to be a stronger advocate.
Councilmember Bingle?
Not so much a question, but a statement of, I, I think that your perspective on the Park Board is going to be important. As somebody also born and raised in District One, I think it's, it's easy, even if unintentional, to forget District One, and so I know that you'll bring a, a good perspective there. You've, I think you've shown and demonstrated your love for District One and how much you want to advocate on, on, on our behalf, and so I'm excited to see you stepping into this position, and I hope that our voices combined can help elevate our, our district's needs. And so, yeah, I'm glad that you were, you're applying, and I'm trying to get some more District One folks on there, but, but Lindsay, in a district where we have few voices advocating for District One, you've been a consistent one, so I think you'll do a great job.
Thank you. I feel like it's a privilege. A lot of people in our district are working, and they're barely making ends meet, so to have time, to carve out time away from your family to make sure that they have a better community to be in is so important, but I do feel like it's a privilege.
All right. Well, thank you, Lindsay, and I'm sure you'll be hearing from us. We'll be waiting.
Thank you.
Okay.
All righty. Matt Boston, come on down.
I feel like with an intro like that, I should be on a game show. Should be prizes at the end of this.
I agree.
What can I do for you? I, I heard you had questions on the, the ordinance, the, the change in the ordinance, yeah? The mid-biennial ordinance.
Go ahead, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I mean, if you could just, again, give kind of just a brief overview of, of the changes or the proposal, and then have a follow-up to that.
Yeah, super high level, a lot of cleanup on wording in some of this, you know, worked with Jessica Strat and myself, Legal, Adam McDaniel, everybody kind of putting eyes on it and having a correlation to the, the RCWs that are out there. We also obviously had a conversation at our last budget meeting to switch our budget discussions to bi-monthly now, and so that change is in there. Yeah, that's, that's kind of the high, high-level, overreaching concept.
So I guess my, that corrects my question or concern is just what, what is going to be the commitment, and I, I'm not trying to suggest there isn't one, but, but what is the commitment to making sure that we have kind of timely, up-to-date data related to the budget, related to changes happening, you know, over the course of the next year as we approach that mid-biennial point in time, and in particular, to stress the, you know, kind of a, a six-year outlook of some kind, or, or even further, but having something like that, that it can be updated and, and stay up-to-date so that we understand the long-term sustainability of what we're doing.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So information is, is out there, and we're, and we're making it more and more available to not only our managers, but our council members, our staff, et cetera, and, and with the hope of our constituents having a dashboard of it, so it's just truly public-facing. I had a meeting with your budget managers just last week, talking about trying to eliminate some of the, the duplicity that might happen if we're both kind of doing the same analysis. Obviously, there could be disagreements that we have, but let's all work from the same playbook. The information is really out there, and, and with your budget manager, you have a direct conduit to that, that information. And, and with your budget manager, you have a direct conduit to that, that information. She's able to ask questions to not only me, but also to some of my staff as well on kind of discrepancies that they're seeing. But we, we, I mean, I, I think you've seen over the last year, we are giving you information as, as quickly as it's becoming available to us. And we continue to do that so that we can pivot appropriately if there is a, if there is a challenge that we're seeing, or if there's opportunity that we're seeing. And I think we've done that continuously over the last 12, 14, 13 months.
So in, in the interest then of, you know, as you said, working together and, and, you know, not reinventing the wheel, I mean, is there a, a commitment or are you willing to commit to providing at least read-only access to all the different financial data for our budget manager? I mean, there's a lot of stuff that she can't access directly. She has to go through Jessica, through you, through others. And it would be great if she had the ability to actually pull those reports, all that data, provide those information. Not suggesting edit it, manipulate it, but just read-only access.
This is the first I'm hearing that, that those reports aren't, aren't able to be viewed by your budget manager. I, I, it's my understanding that she has FMS and Questica access, that is, read-only access on that. But yeah, I, absolutely, I'll sit with her and see what, what we're missing there and we can try to find a solution.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Boston? Having been on the other side of the fence, I'm sure you understand our concerns.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. All right, now we are going to go into executive session for 15 minutes.
No, this will just be the second one.
Let's just go.
We don't need this one.
Okay. We're going to executive session for labor negotiations for 20 minutes.
Counsel President?
Yes.
I, I believe the city attorney had said that we could speak on issues, legal issues related to what we're voting on tonight.
I just want to clarify that counsel wanted to also consider potential litigation and pending litigation. We got those two as well. The pending one is just the fourth quarter litigation report, which can be put onto another Monday night. So there's no urgency on that. But if you wanted to also discuss potential litigation, I'm available for that.
Well, then you should make it longer, to 30 minutes.
Well, then you want to go 30 minutes?
Yes. Yes.
And then, so we're going to combine the potential litigation and labor negotiations?
Yes.
All right, we are in executive session until 4:32. No action is anticipated to be taken.
All right, we are back. Just our last action is to adopt the final agenda for tonight. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all right. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any nays?
No.
All right. We will be in recess until 6:00 PM tonight. Thank you all so much.
The ayes have it.